Yeah.
Yeah, that happens.
Yeah.
The nerd.
He said that I.
Like, we don't have enough snow. We need it.
They said that they have got permission.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Huh!
So then I'm like, oh, tell them to not dump there. I never gave it work.
No. I always hope no one will know, but then they always know. And that's annoying. Nobody's called and asked, and I certainly haven't given it. Let's hope the mayor didn't. Okay, I gotta go get a mask and what? My water. Oh, do not want to be here.
I better get you on your way.
Right. Um.
Hello.
How's it going there?
Pretty good. Lori, you bring me with confidence?
Oh, my goodness.
No?
Can't you tell? No, I'm literally shaking in my boots. I don't know how to do the YouTube situation, but other than that, I think I'm good. I think the meeting is already being recorded. I do have two questions that I don't know how to present or do whatever I need to do. First of all, Christie Galar has asked me to have these out.
Okay.
She's gonna share it when she speaks. But, yeah.
She's not a judge. She's just a speaker.
I believe so. She was, I believe she's only a judge.
Hi there.
I'm trying to set up her, I got an email about setting up a joint city P O C C and Lake County School District meeting. And I need to run some dates by some council to see when they would be available for that in February on a Thursday. And then because of my schedule, um, my sending on those referrals, we need to either decide you first, Christian asked me to get it to you first or to ask the council about special meetings on the twenty second or just the regular on March first. I don't know.
Do I look down here?
I don't know. No. Where are we supposed to be? I just don't know.
Oh, no, it's okay. I'm happy. I just have her quite custom tip.
Please sit me off for a minute.
Let's lay to the bar.
I'm helping her and I was like, I want to. Yeah.
Data's one winged man.
It's uh.
It's. Think this is just where, this is just where Max works at.
Hi, kids.
Hello.
Uh, it is advised, so I think I'll be wearing mine. But.
Who makes the rules? In here, my parents provide.
Okay.
Well, you can tell I haven't been here in a while.
A stack of paper.
Your mailbox is full, isn't it?
If there's anything you want me to recycle, just toss it my way. I don't want you to be loaded down with it, but.
All I do at home too, mostly.
Hey, that, uh, your retreat went very well today.
I was expecting to see you today, but then I forgot about you. That's okay. They're gonna come Friday for our meeting.
Thanks, Lori Parker.
Turn it down.
I feel. Yeah.
This is fun.
I guess I make the great family dinner now.
Today, a lot of laughter.
Any chance they could zoom in tonight? Don't open it back in high light.
Enough. To her, I'm leaving. I'm asking what it's supposed to do on a big day.
Yeah, I've got a lot of things to say. It's yours.
Hal, I'm checking to see, can you hear me okay?
Lori, I heard you fine.
Hi, Granny. Good.
Hey, Granny, it's great to meet you.
Good to be here too.
And this is my friend.
Oh, you are.
I know. Again. We can share. Thank you very much. Thank you. I know. That's all. That's exactly what we're doing.
I tried. I'm a little afraid. Can anyone on Zoom hear me? Christie or Hal?
I can hear you just fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bauda. Okay, I'm not gonna worry about it.
So, something I heard about, but it's very, you know, it was Tracy. Tracy's been on me. She did not want to give it up. You might be able to work it today.
That's where Jane was. Are you Christian?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, Jane's upstairs.
It's tradition.
It's tradition.
Sounds like the beginning of a song. First thing we do. For sure. Here, as you can. So, actual.
To be great.
So, moving right over here.
Okay, who's up on the big board?
Christiana.
I can see Christian is there.
And Hal.
Okay. I was looking, seeing if any city council members were zooming in at this point.
Not yet, no. It's, it's, uh.
I made it.
Hey, Max.
Just me.
No, she just, she put them in random order, so you can sit in your, your regular seating, if you'd like.
It's real bad, huh? Straight? Possible?
So, uh.
She wears a cloth.
No, Tracy's on now. Tracy's on.
Oh, Tracy is on? Really? Are you exhausted?
Well, where'd you come from? I mean, you know, I come to these meetings driving up from Springfield.
Wow.
So.
You're crazy.
Well, that is insane.
Right. I thought today, I drove six hours today.
Yeah.
Did you drive there and back?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like seven.
I swear, it's a wild ride. Cisco's on also? Bye, Tracy. Bye, Cisco.
Hello, everyone.
Got about another minute before we get started. We have, uh, uh, forty, four city council members here. We have two on Zoom and Christian will be, uh, squating this evening and will take his seat with us, so we will have our full city council. Good job, city council. Good job, Max.
I made it.
Strong work. Strong work.
Then how was, then how was Pueblo? Then how was Pueblo?
Pueblo?
Pueblo.
Pueblo?
That's how you say it, South of Pueblo. It's Pueblo.
Fast and Furious.
Yeah.
That's what I would say. Very fast, very furious, but got it done.
That's why I do one big city shopping on the way down. I'm so curious.
Off the bat.
I'm gonna use that for parking.
Nope. You didn't. Sorry, you're S O L. You'll not be able to read anything today.
Unless somebody else came.
What's going on, Elsa?
Yeah, you spelled me out before. There, appreciate you.
Do you, I have like three pairs of reading glasses in my drawer. I think they were Max's.
Really?
Yeah.
In your drawer?
So, if you, yeah, if you want.
Can I, yeah, I'll take care of it. You got some readers?
Oh, exactly. See if any of these work. This would be the aging of city council.
This is the older.
Speak for yourself. Okay, good deal. Good deal. All right, I'm gonna keep mine ready.
Keep mine in the drawer.
Yeah.
This member was back.
We could have one pair for every drawer. Okay, I'm running just a couple minutes late, but we're gonna go ahead and get started as soon as, uh, as soon as Tim can get his glasses on.
It's a good look.
Uh, it is six oh two, and I call the city council meeting of Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Loretta.
Here.
Councilmember Phil.
Present. Here.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Pedency.
Present.
Councilmember Tharp. Councilmember Tharp.
He, he's kind of giving us a thumbs up, but we can't hear him.
Okay.
Cisco can, I think you, we heard you a little while ago. I don't think you, can you hear me? That would be a negative. I don't know.
Tracy, could you hear us okay? Okay.
She's shaking her head yes.
She answered yes, so, and he did. He said something earlier, so.
Okay, yeah, I thought you did too. Uh, the first thing we're gonna do are some presentations and then some oaths of office. And I do want to tell you that, uh, the municipal judge, uh, intended to be here to, to, uh, for the oath of office, but, uh, she is sick. And she believes she has ultrasound. I don't think she's actually been able to, uh, get her test results quite yet. Uh, we're gonna start with the same proclamation. And if you feel, we just second act of grabs. That's gonna be presented with the key of the city tonight. No one told me that. This is the super deluxe and official that Bill uses it. Tonight, we have a special guest with us. Her name is Carol Flynn. Carol, come on, please. I can just get that. Got it. Um. I've known Carol for a long time, uh, since nineteen eighty-eight. Um, I don't, I cannot think of stable person in our city who deserves this more, who has done more for the city and this community. It, 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 it's stunning what she's accomplished. Uh, so I'm gonna go through the proclamation really quickly. Whereas the city of Lethal treasures those in our city who have made a significant difference over many years. Many, many, many years. Oh, how good.
That's one year.
Uh, and whereas, uh, this citizen has committed herself to the better. And whereas, uh, this citizen has committed herself to the better of our city and our community, and whereas the tireless commitment of this individual has made us a better people and a better place to live. Whereas we are all fortunate for our hard work. Whereas the city of Ledville wishes to honor those in our midst who have carried out to make a difference over more than four decades. Whereas, this person has exemplified the spirit of our city by serving in the Lions Club for thirty-five years and being a lion mascot and parry despite a hundred plus degree temperatures inside the Lions. Uh, over these years, uh, over these years, and directed the career fair for twenty-one years and volunteered in the Lions Club beer and food garden during boom days and volunteered as a reader for West Park Schools for twelve years. And was on the school district accounting building for twenty-two years and served on the Chamber of Commerce Board and directed Victorian home tours and the barbecue and beer fest and served on the tourism panel for years. And has been the delightful Mrs. Claus for as long as we've been here. Now, therefore, I regret, uh, mayor, but I do here represent and key the city to Carol Quinn.
Thank you very much. This is humbling and, um, I, I can't tell you how, um, nice this is for me, but, you know, I've always had wonderful people to work with on committees and that's what made everything a success.
Thank you. Well, next up we have some oaths of office. We'll start with, uh, Allison Hope. Allison, will you come up?
Yeah, right over here, thank you. And you can have this to read to you with life.
Yeah.
And so, uh, I repeat after me, I.
I, Allison Hope.
Do solemnly swear by the ever living God.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
That I will support the con-
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal code of the city of Ledville.
And the municipal code of the city of Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of Ledville city treasurer.
Of Ledville city treasurer.
Upon which I am honored. Thank you, congratulations. And then one copy will be issued, one copy will be issued. Thank you very much. And thanks for skipping out.
Uh, next we have, uh, a new city council member. Christian, you can come up here. And we have three city council members, uh, that, uh, that will be swearing in for their second terms or subsequent terms. So Max and Tim, will you come up please also? Cisco, will you step up here please? Yes, please. I thought we all do, we do all these, all four of these at once.
Could you maybe grab a mic or turn one of the mics so Cisco could hear?
Cisco, can you hear me okay?
Yep, he can hear you.
Um, go ahead and unmute so that you can, you can go through this, this process with us. Thank you. Okay. You can stand up if you want, it's okay. All right, uh, so I'll start out and you'll each say your names, including you Cisco, and then we'll go through this. So I.
Justin Maslow.
Tim Yell.
Christian Lumbert.
Cisco? Please say your name. I think it's in it, it's terrible. We're not pretty concerned ourselves with that. Do solemnly swear by the ever living God.
Do solemnly swear by the ever living God.
That I will support the constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
The constitution of the state of Colorado.
Constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the municipal code of the city of Ledville. And faithfully perform-
The city of Ledville.
And faithfully perform the duties of Ledville city council member. Of Ledville city council member.
Of Ledville city council member. On which, yeah.
Thank you. Christian, congratulations. Cisco, congratulations.
Your hand goes to the other side, uh, real quick. And one reason.
Okay, before we talk any further, uh, we have the, uh, the pleasure of having Lord Science in here tonight. If you want to come up and say hello to everybody.
Laurie is, uh, we are new city administrator. Uh, I appreciate her being here tonight on the City Council. Her official birthday will be February the fourteenth. Uh, but thank you for being here and, uh, maybe introduce yourself to everybody and give us a little bit of idea if we want.
Sure, okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, can you?
Sit back.
Could you maybe speak to the microphone right there, the podium, please? Thank you, thank you so much.
Uh, so as the mayor of Kankakee, new city administrator, I, uh, and most recently I've been a city attorney with the city holder and prior to that, I was the city attorney for Moab and so I'm quite familiar with challenges that, um, vacation towns have when, uh, they are a popular destination. And so I am very well aware of many of the issues facing Ledville, affordable housing and, uh, lack of, uh, infrastructure and resources for the city. And, uh, we just have an amazing relationship with Ledville. Have loved the town for so long and have wanted to be here for so long. My spouse Julie is here with me, uh, and also I have my friend Mark who came all the way out to this city, fully supported. And so, uh, it, Ledville is just an amazing, amazing special place for us. And so I can't tell you how excited I am to be here and to, uh, help keep the city. And, uh, I know it's a big task, but I can't tell you how excited I am to be here.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to your visit. At this time, I would ask for the approval of the agenda. Home Minister approves the agenda.
Three seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. This time we have housekeeping matters. Um, does anybody have anything we'd like to discuss, uh, briefly before we move on? We have two city council members who have made long drives to get here. Uh, you know, it's, uh, it, well, not this time, okay, well, normal. Uh, it, it amazes me how dedicated the city council is, uh, to being present and, and, uh, and helping our community, so I appreciate it. Any other housekeeping matters?
Mayor, I'll just keep my comments, if you will, towards the street department. I think I would be best suited there.
Sure, absolutely. At this time, uh, we would entertain any public comments, uh, of items now on the agenda. And if anybody would like to speak to city council, please come up, uh, give us your name and your address and you will have three minutes.
If you have someone, um, on Zoom. Valerie Landis.
Who is it?
Valerie Landis.
Okay.
If that's correct.
Valerie, you, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Uh, my name is Valerie Landis. Uh, I do live at one oh four Mount Home State. Um, so I just wanted to share some really concerning encounters with two aggressive loose dogs that have happened quite a few times all over town, um, both within city limits and outside. Uh, personally and from talking with members of the community. Some of my, my husband and I have encountered these dogs about three times over the, the last week or so. Uh, but I do understand these incidents have been happening since July of twenty twenty-one. My initial encounter with these off-leash dogs, um, included that one of them became aggressive towards a friend and I as we were walking our own dogs who were both on leash. Uh, they started to excessively bark and growl. They showed, it showed its teeth, uh, and lunged towards us. A few days ago, my husband saw the same two dogs wandering outside of the dog park. Uh, mind you, where there's also a children's playground, um, and I've recently seen them on the mineral belt as well. So my own personal experiences seem somewhat mild. Um, but I'm really concerned because these dogs have continued to run loose in what appears to be almost daily. And in talking with many members of the community, they've been attacked and actually bitten by these dogs. Um, and the same kind of goes for some of their pets as well. Uh, there have been sightings and reports on both the east and west sides, and I understand these dogs live on the east side. Um, so I'm on the west side, uh, and I'm now fearful to really walk around my neighborhood to walk on the mineral belt. Um, as of late, I've been nervous to have my dogs in our backyard. Uh, these dogs have been known to hop fences as well and attack dogs, um, living in, and outside at their own homes. Um, I'm a dog lover through and through, and I'm no expert, but it's really sad to see these dogs act aggressively because it seems very apparent that they're doing so out of fear. Um, I don't know the owners, I don't know their story, but I know that they're never spotted with the dogs when these encounters have happened and they keep happening. Um, I have been really grateful to the animal shelter for their support and their guidance in these really scary incidents. Uh, but to me, this doesn't seem like a shelter issue. It seems to be an animal control issue. Uh, we've reported, my husband and I have reported any occurrence, um, that we've had to the sheriff's office and they've been really kind and responsive. They shared what actions they've planned on taking. Uh, but my frustration really lies that this keeps happening. Uh, so I want to know what we can do besides just reporting as this happens over and over again and how far these incidents need to go until the problem is really fixed. Um, it seems like an ongoing cycle of these dogs being picked up, the owners being fined, and then the dogs are released back to their owners, and then this starts all over again. So I understand that this is a likely also a county issue, um, but with many of these interactions happening within city limits and impacting countless members of our community, I'd just like to ask what the city can do to help stop, uh, these two specific, um, aggressive dogs from, um, having these encounters happen in the future. Um, with both members of our community, human, canine, um, etc.
Uh, Valerie, I would like to answer that. And Caitlin, if you, if you want to, uh, help, I would appreciate it. Uh, the first I ever heard of these dogs was about three days ago, uh, on the weekend on Facebook. So, uh, I don't know who else may or may not have known that these dogs were roaming around at large. Uh, but our police chief, uh, sent out a, a notice today, uh, that these dogs are to be tracked. We need to find the owners, who the owners are. Um, it just so happens that about a week ago, we hired an animal control officer and, uh, the city of Ledville has never had an animal control officer. Um, so, uh, we, we are now informed of this and we're acting on it. I hope that we're going to act, uh, successfully. Uh, because with those dogs, I don't know how you, how you track them down and how you find the owners. Um, the chief has actually asked for his department, he's printed out pictures of the dogs, which were on Facebook, and has asked them to go door to door if they have to, to find out who owns those dogs. And regardless of whether the dogs are loose, those owners will be cited into court under our vicious animal ordinance. Caitlin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Please.
That, that is helpful. Thank you so much. Um, I, I understand from a fellow member of the community, um, that knows where they live. Can we be helpful in reporting that information to you?
Oh, absolutely. You, you would shortcut this process in order.
Okay, how, what would be the best way to share that information?
Uh, you can email it to us if you want to and I can share that with Hal.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
We will act on it.
Yeah, so I was, I was going for a medical operation, um, but I was in communication with Hal, so I do know they had boots on the ground earlier, um, because the dogs were brought in from, uh, sheriff's deputy. Previously, we do have the owner's information and the address of that was shared as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak?
I haven't been talking with this. Okay.
Miss.
Is there anybody else that we know that would like to speak to city council?
Rebecca Nuff does, but there's also a comment from Claire McKeever who was, that was what she was there to comment on about as well. So maybe go on to Rebecca.
I think Hal had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, how did what's comment?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, to ask that if anybody in the community, uh, has information about these dogs or, you know, especially the owners, to please email me directly. And then that way I can act on this very quickly.
Thank you, Hal.
Thank you.
Hal, maybe you can put your email in the comments. You have a good idea. Hal, put your email in the, in the, uh, chat.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that.
Am I able to say something really quick?
We're not sure who that is, but go ahead.
Um, my name is Megan Liziska. I live at two zero two East Seventh Street, and I've actually had encounters with these dogs. One of them actually jumped into my fence and I do know where they live. I don't know if you want me to say it over the, the Zoom call. I don't know how to get into the comments.
Okay, uh, frankly, you can give it to us right now. That won't hurt my feelings.
Okay, they live at a hundred and thirty-five East Eighth Street, and I've actually walked over there. I don't know the owner's name, but the lady that owns the house, one of the dogs, I believe, is hers and the other is her daughter's. And when one of them was loose, I had walked over there and to talk to them and I was like, hey, your dog's loose. They were just standing outside smoking. They were just standing outside smoking and said, I know. So they don't care that they are loose at all. And I spoke to, I forget the name of the officers, but I've spoke to a few different police officers. I have several photos of them out.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully that of some help.
Okay, thank you.
If you could, if you could email me the photos and the address, I would appreciate it.
Okay. How do I get information for your email or in the comments?
Just tap on the top of your computer. Oh, okay. Well, my email address is H. Edwards at Leadville dash C O dot G O V.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else? Do you have anybody else who wants to speak to city council?
I do. I have.
You had Rebecca.
Yes, Rebecca and then Christie Galar.
Okay. Rebecca speak next.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rebecca Naft. Good evening, council members and attendees. I just wanted to make some comments regarding concerns I have around the City of Leadville accommodations tax that was approved in the November ballot. I guess I felt this was the best forum to get the word out to other businesses and short-term rental owners that the tax went into effect supposedly January 1st, 2022. And yet we have yet to receive any notification or communication about the tax, how to collect, how to record, who to collect from, general, any official information, what the tax is. There's a little bit of confusion. I'm speaking on behalf of four or five different business owners and S T R owners in the city who are also, until I contacted them in this last week, had no idea that they should have been collecting this extra tax. So I just wanted to raise this in case there were some council members who weren't aware. I believe there has been some discussion about it recently with the tourism panel meeting. But I guess I just wanted to let everybody know and I would like some official communication. And I would like just to know what I'm supposed, I don't want to be caught short. Apparently, I think there's an assumption on the city's part that we should have just known about it and then we should have just been collecting this extra tax from January 1st, 2022. I'm not even sure if that's the case. So I guess I've just got some concerns around that and I just don't want to be left in the dark. I would say almost everybody who's a short-term rental owner or lodging business owner does not really know that they're supposed to be collecting this tax at this point in time.
Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Who else do we have? We have Christie.
Hello, city council, can you hear me?
Yeah, you'll need to speak up a little bit, Christie.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm having a little bit of bandwidth problem. I think that's might be the problem. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you guys so much for letting me speak tonight. I gave Lori some handouts for you guys. I'm creating a document every month that will give a update on housing activities. I'm also going to share that in the chat for online folks. So give me just a second to get that link. Okay, I've shared that online. So Tracy and Cisco, you should be able to access that. It's the same document that I shared back in November, just updated for January to let you guys know what's going on with housing. The main changes have to do with the planning grant as well as the ship grant. They are moving along and with the planning grant, if you have any specific questions, you can reach out to Ann Schneider or Tim Bergman to get more information outside of what I put on this document. And you guys all know about the ship grant because you're all on the Laura board as well. But great work getting that RFQ together. I was going to reach out to Ann because I did not see it go out today. So I'll see what's going on with that. Also, the Housing Coalition is meeting tomorrow in their regular meeting from 12 to 2. You guys are always welcome to attend that. And then I just put another link at the bottom for a B O C C meeting that is scheduled for February 7th. Because at that date, they're going to be looking at some bids that they are getting for the engineering and architecture work for the site analysis, I believe. So that's an important meeting if anybody wants to keep an ear and know what's going on with that process. So that's all I have today. Does anybody have any questions about housing?
No, but Christie, this is Greg. I have a question for you. When, I don't know if I have seen the I G A to be presented to city council, so we'll do that at a future council date. If you learn more about it, please let me know where it is right now.
Sure, I'll reach out to Ann tomorrow and see what's going on with that. And I'm sorry that I was just figuring out today that it, that there was some miscommunication on that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your hard work, Christie.
Yeah, you guys take care. Oh, it looks like Cisco has a question.
What Christie said is, a couple of months ago, we put in resolution a commitment to this planning grant of up to $20,000. The actual cost is going to be a little over $8,000. Split between the city and county equal about 80, 150. I forget the exact number right now. But it's quite a bit less than the worst-case scenario. And we'll be seeing that I D A between the city and county city. Elsa, did you want to make a comment?
I did. Do you mind?
I don't mind at all.
I just wanted to let that go first. Okay, so, hello, my name is Elsa Clark. I live at 135 West 3rd Street. I am here because I'm very grateful Becknaught contacted me about making sure I was collecting the tax. And I wanted to share some of the learnings I've had as a business owner specifically around Airbnb. So Airbnbs, I can easily adjust the taxes that I'm collecting as a business owner through my own software. But Airbnb has complete control over their software and what they collect, et cetera. Airbnb is no longer collecting the county lodging tax for city city entities. So as a business owner within the city, I am only having my state tax collected. So when I contacted them to try to get them to put the city tax onto my listing, they said that you have to have a contract. The municipal entity has to have a contract with Airbnb. And they list all of the different municipalities that have a contract. Otherwise, they will not be collecting or remitting taxes. If you know this, awesome. Just wanted to give you a quick update. And then I also learned that the only way that I can do that is by creating an extra fee line manually in Airbnb, which would not get collected by them, would not get remitted by them. That would be a manual thing that I would have to track. So my request is very similar to Beck's. I think getting an immediate notice out to businesses about their responsibility to collect this tax is very crucial. I'd say that just for context, in the first two weeks of January, when this tax was not being collected by me, nor by Airbnb, I now have to pay $900 in taxes out of pocket that I would have been collecting as a pass-through. So I'm sure that it varies based on entity, but it will become a very significant portion of money the longer businesses aren't collecting this tax, which I think is PR shame. And then I'd also say, I think it'd be great to have, I'd request a timeline about when you'll be collecting or when you'll be communicating to businesses and the relationship with Muni Revs and what businesses should be expecting from Muni Revs Communications. And then I also wanted to offer, I don't think that Airbnb is a very easy platform to use. They have a lot of control over the way that people list their boarding. So in the meantime, I just wanted to offer that I'd be happy to work with various lodging entities in town, just so I can get different perspectives that are not just my own lodging business, to create kind of an easy cheat sheet that could go out with your communications, just so that people could be setting up that manual tax on any Airbnb listings. And I'd also say that as a tourism panel member, I'm also very eager to be helpful about this because it will significantly impact our budget if it's not getting appropriately collected.
Okay, thank you. As we discussed this morning, and thank you Elsa. There are certain things that just, you know, hadn't occurred to us as a city. Our well-meaning tax to support housing now has glitches. Do you know, Donna, when Muni Revs intends to send out notifications?
Cisco, would Elsa like to speak on this after Donna?
Yeah, I do want to let you know that I have been trying to work with Muni Revs since the end of December. And I just today got a sample letter that, well, we've been working on these sample letters, separate communications. And I just got it today of Muni Revs saying, is this okay to go? So I'm thinking that S T Rs are going to get their communication this week, if not next week, with the latest lodging. We're still trying to gather all that information of lodging establishments. So those might be a little bit longer, but I'm hoping that I'm still hoping within next week, everybody has their communication.
Thank you very much.
Donna, I have a question. Does that letter include the fact that Airbnb, Airbnb and I believe VRBO is not collecting the city tax?
They do note that, yes.
So that'll be in the communications?
We can add that into the communication. It's not in there yet, but I just got the sample letter.
I don't think a lot of S T Rs especially, or whoever's using those platforms, I don't think they know that that's not happening. A lot of them would not know that, so.
I can include that. I know Muni Revs is aware that Airbnb does not have a contract with us to include those in their taxes, so.
So we just want to prevent folks from having to pay out of pocket like Elsa's having to do? And get those communications out as soon as we can.
We have been pushing. So I'm working diligently. I'm trying as hard as I can to get it going, but like the mayor said, it's just been kind of one thing after another that we did not realize what it was going to take. So we're trying to work hard now to get it taken care of. One thing that I think is out there is that the taxes are due quarterly. So these January through March taxes won't be due until April 30th. So not that that is any any relief from what has happened in January already. But, you know, I guess you just don't need to be worried that into January, you're going to have these taxes due and I don't even know what to do. So I apologize, but hopefully all these glitches will be out and we'll get it taken care of.
Thank you, Donna.
Mayor, we have some more comments.
Yes, who else?
Beck is asking if we could get, if they could get an email to clarify what the tax is immediately. I'm so confused and I don't know what the tax amount is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then Cisco did want, Councilmember Cisco was wanting to speak on the tax, accommodation tax as well.
Okay. Cisco, you're up.
Sure, thank you. Can y'all hear me?
You need to speak up as much as you possibly can.
Okay, can y'all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to also highlight Becknaught's second two comments, which were that she's out of pocket about 300 from taxes uncollected in the first three weeks of January. And then she asked, what does "out there" mean? I think Donna had said another thing that's out there. Is that in any kind of formal communication? Or just, what did you mean by that, Donna?
I'm not sure what he's asking.
The Mrs. Naft's comment on what does "out there" mean? She was wondering, wanted her to clarify what that meant.
Okay.
I know, I'm trying to remember. What did she say?
Beck, could you clarify what the context was used for "out there"?
Yes.
We're all a bit lost on that.
Sorry. So Donna said, oh, sorry. Donna said that taxes will be due quarterly and not payable until April. That information is out there. So business owners don't have to worry because taxes aren't due until April. I guess I, what does "out there" mean? Is there an online website? Is it on the city website? Is it on the state's tax use form? I just, where, how do we know what the information is? The only reason I know and have let Elsa and Leleese and Alex and Nadeem and all these business owners know, the only reason I know is because I contacted Lori and she emailed me back and told me.
Well, I apologize for that. I didn't realize that I had said that they're due quarterly and it is out there. So no, it's not out published anywhere yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm wondering, I mean, yes, this was voted. It has the legal description that came through the ballot. But given, I mean, our original intent, of course, was for this money to be passed through from the guest through the lodging entity to, you know, to the city and the tourism board. Is there a way that we can have some flexibility as this gets implemented, seeing as we've had a few stumbles? Because I'm really uncomfortable with suddenly having lodging establishments saying, hey, I had to cough up $300 or $900 of our own money, you know, because that was never our intent.
No, it wasn't. And I think that maybe to your point, I think it's a great idea is that maybe when we do send out for tax collection, we make the starting date something different than January 1st. And it depends on when we send that out. Maybe it would be the third week in January rather than January 1st. I'm just thinking out loud at this point. I don't know what an appropriate date was, but I really like the thought.
My other question is, how much trouble would it be for the city to enter into a contract with Airbnb or?
We'll have to find that out because the first I had heard of it was this morning. So apparently Muni Revs knew that, but.
Yeah, Muni Revs actually, after Lori emailed Beck or Rebecca, I'm sorry, I pronounced her name wrong. But then Muni Revs informed us or asked us if we had a contract with Airbnb. And that's the first we heard of it.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Please.
I'm all for giving some grace period for this since we don't seem to have our ducks in a row. However, I think legally, and I would let Christiana comment on this. The law, the vote was to start January 1st. And if we're going to do a grace period, I think we're going to need an ordinance or resolution or something like that. Not just put it in an email or a letter that goes out.
Christiana, did you hear that?
I did hear that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's probably the right procedurally, the right procedure to follow if you are going to do a grace period, since you adopted. Um, if you are going to do a grace period, um, since you adopted, uh, not only did the ballot language say that, uh, the tax would start on January 1st, 2022, um, but you also adopted an ordinance, ordinance number 11, series of 2021, um, implementing this tax. And so, um, the proper procedure to, um, you know, provide for a grace period would be to adopt an ordinance too.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I add a couple of comments here? One, at the very beginning, considering it was our perhaps lack of foresight as a city, perhaps we could, as a city, be on the hook for these lodging establishments, perhaps reimbursing them for their tax for the time being, until we get our ducks in a row and we're able to send it out and start. I, I don't know what else to say. We should not have our businesses pay for a tax that we were not set up to do. And, and I don't know how much that's going to cost, but it's truly our lack of foresight. That's my comment number one. Comment number two is this goes back to a comment and comments I've made in the past and something I hope the city administrator agrees to as well, or at least thinks of, uh, is this and other issues that have been raised and raised, and it's outside of our actual conversation on this lodging tax, we need a communications strategy. And none of us are communication directors or responsible. We, we have the paper that does a great job from their side. But we need a true press release for certain things like this that as the, as the city of Leadville is growing, so is our needs to actually have a unified voice on what's truly happening and making sure that we have a communication strategy that when we start pressing that domino, we understand where it's going to go, or at least we can anticipate that. So I'm hoping that, um, this and other conversations I know the county's been having is Leadville's growing and the last thing I want is to not pass the front page test of the Denver Post, the New York Times, and we fall over ourselves. So once again, this is a good, strong, uh, it's another example of why I feel we need to figure out how to have either a communications director or somebody on, on as a, some sort of agreement to, to be able to come up with a public affairs communications director. Because we didn't think about it, but I'm certain if we had somebody in this room that that was their job, they would say, wait a second, how are we going to unroll this? And we wouldn't have this situation as a whole. So number one is, can we reimburse folks for the time being? Number two, greater picture, what are we going to do about other issues like this when we decide to cast the first stone and make big ripples in the water?
I would say two things to your first point. And one is if we do a grace period, there's no reimbursement necessarily because no one will be out any tax money except the tourism panel.
Yeah.
And so I think that's something we need to consider. If we do a grace period and individual business owners don't get hurt, the tourism panels still get shorted that tax money. And they have a budget for 2022, uh, that, 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 you know, dictates what they get to do in 2022. If they're shorted by $10,000 or it's, I think it's, I think the average, uh, from this, from the city is about $80,000 a year in, in head tax collection. Correct me if I'm wrong, Elsa. But nonetheless, it's not nothing. And a month's worth of tax collection, uh, will be important to them. So we need to look at both sides of this to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say a couple of other things, please. I think all the ta, the tourism panel would be out, but also the Affordable Housing Fund would be out those funds. So I do think we should consider, um, contributing to that fund if, depending on what route this goes, uh, contributing what that fund will have lost from us missing that, you know, whatever the timeframe is, that month or so. I really like what, uh, Councilmember for Gen Z said as well about really thinking about our communications. And I know a, a learning for me is as we approach other things, I will certainly, uh, want to be thinking about and bringing up, how are we going to communicate to the stakeholders for any given decision or given, given policy or ordinance? And I, I would invite the rest of council to do that and the rest of staff. And, um, certainly our new city administrator, I'd hope that would be top of mind. Yeah, and I, and I do want to just empathize with those business owners, um, as well because, uh, and just identify that we can do better in the future.
Thank you.
Can I just ask if a new city administrator has any thoughts on this? I hate to have you stepping in a dog pile of dog doo-doo.
Yeah, put her on the spot.
Well, that was going to be one of my questions on my first day as the other communications director. So you're, you're getting me ahead of my, my, my first day question. So absolutely, I think that's, uh, I think probably, you know, had it been something that, that we were able to hash through, we would probably look at pulling all the business licenses for the short-term rentals. I'm trying to give that letter out in advance of when the tax went into effect. And so I, as I'm sitting here, my, my thought on this is basically, okay, this, this is something that you need to fix, but how do you track it happening in the future? And so I think the, the answer to that is when you're looking at doing something, you have to look at who it affects and how you're communicating with them and getting things up on the website. You know, I know it was in the paper, but getting communications out if you've got some type of an email list, the chambers, those types of things, or you can get the word out in advance so that businesses can prepare and get their, you know, get the fee inserted on their Airbnb profile. That's what they need to do, or get the contract in place with, um, you know, with Airbnb. And the thing you can do is if, if another city is on through, you can contact another city and find out. You know, a lot of times in my old job, that's what we do is we contact another city when they've done something and say, okay, when you did it, what went wrong? And how do we make sure that we don't, you know, make the same mistakes? What did you learn? Because you're always going to learn something as you try the things. And so I think the best thing to do is just to make sure the work gets out as quickly as possible. And then looking forward to make sure how we, we don't make that mistake again.
So I believe this is the first city tax that Leadville has ever collected. No, it's the second one though. We did the marijuana excise tax on real operations and we do collect that on, on a quarterly basis.
So it is a, you know, growing pain for us, but I think we need to concentrate on how we make it right.
Okay, I appreciate that. I agree. Any final thoughts? Okay, thank you all very much. We will work very hard to straighten this out and make it right to the businesses, tourism panel, and also the housing. There is actually no housing entity where the money goes currently. It just goes to the city, uh, into a fund. Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, next up, we have department reports. Uh, first is the police department. Hal, are you still with us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The big news is on the, uh, the personnel front. Uh, we've got three new community service officer twos on board. Megan Barnett is going to be performing as a CSO two as well as an animal control officer. She's a fully certified and very experienced, uh, animal control officer that we were able to coax to come over here from Summit County. Initially, we have Destiny Barazza and Natalie Lopez. Two CSO twos, Natalie, uh, aspires to go to the police academy. And Destiny has already gone through CLEDA, but she has to, um, retake the written test. If she's able to pass that, uh, we can promote her to a police officer. And, uh, we have an additional applicant for CSO slash animal control officer. And again, she's, this person is from Summit County too. We get her on board in March as planned. We will have, uh, animal control coverage seven days a week. And, uh, I'm allowing them to go into the county to, uh, perform animal control duties as needed. And we just have two of our CSOs, Maria Porzal, Will Martin started the, uh, police academy yesterday. They're down in, uh, Glenwood Springs and they'll, should be done in, uh, I think it's late April, early May, they'll be coming out of the academy. As, uh, police officers now going to field training. So that is the big news from the police department. This, this information that we just got about these, these marauding dogs is, uh, I just heard about it today. But we will be addressing that, um, and hopefully, uh, resolving the issue. Uh, aside from that, that's, that's the big news from the police department. We, we continue to, you know, struggle with, with staffing shortage and COVID and everything else, but we're managing.
Any questions for Commissioner Edwards? Beck?
Commissioner Edwards, a quick question is how are the community services officers assisting the street department with removal of cars? Are they going to the, could you explain that a little further?
Okay, well, the street department, if they have to clear snow on a street, they, they will put signage up, like I think it's 24 hours in advance. And we, uh, I, I communicate with, with, with Tommy about this all the time. And, uh, when he needs us to be out there towing and removing vehicles, he lets us know, uh, as far in advance as possible. We have CSO's on call. We rotate that so it's not the same person each time. And when they're needed, they're called out and they respond and they, they do what's necessary to tow the cars we're moving.
And, uh, how, do you have a, just a quick estimate of how many vehicles have been removed, uh, this winter due to plowing and, and how's the community reacting to that?
Well, we haven't specifically tracked how many vehicles have been removed. I know it's been, um, you know, several. As far as the community responding to it, uh, we haven't polled the community. We, I, I haven't received any complaints or, or any issues about it from, from members of the community. So I'm not aware of any problems. Again, I, I communicate with, with Tommy on a regular basis. And, uh, the last time I spoke to him, what's it, what's it, do believe it was last week. He told me that he didn't have any issues with, with what we've been doing. He's been able to get people out there when he needs them and get the cars moved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the fire department report.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may, may I ask Commissioner Edwards one question?
Yes, please do.
Commissioner Edwards, how are you doing on staffing as far as what your goals are for the department? Where, where are you at? How many more would you like or are you there? What is that balance?
Uh, well, the goal, uh, Councilman Tharp is to have, I'd like to have four full-time community service officer twos, two of those being, uh, uh, animal control trained. I would like to ultimately have, uh, at least six post-certified police officers in the field, three assigned to day shift and three assigned at nights. And I'd like to have, um, ultimately, you know, two sergeants, one assigned to day shift, one assigned to night shift. That would be the, that would be the, I mean, we have that, we'd be in good shape. Uh, I'll, I'll tell you this.
Apologies if I could, I can't, um, I have a hard time sorting who meets all those. So it sounds like you're short one sergeant and four post officers at this moment, but maybe we'll have two more post officers soon?
Well, I've got two P, I have two, uh, post-certified police officer candidates in the hiring pipeline right now. Those, our goal is to send those two to the May 5th Police Academy in Breckenridge. And then I have two CSO twos, one who could possibly become a, a post-certified police officer here in, in, in the foreseeable future. The other one is not, uh, she's not, uh, old enough to be a, a post-certified officer at this time. But the mayor has informed me that, um, he's willing to send her to the academy. Uh, and then when she becomes of age, which would be December next, December this year, um, we could, we could, you know, slot her into a police officer position. So there's a lot of potential there, uh, Cisco. A, a lot of this depends on the, uh, the hiring process, uh, you know, the psychological assessment. You know, you just never know how that's going to end up. But I would say the things for us right now on the recruiting front are looking very good. They're exceeding my expectations, but the hiring process does.
I was going to say, I.
Go ahead.
Oh, I know, oh, I know how difficult it is to, to hire in general, especially in this profession at the moment. So it just seems like your strategies are working and wanted to commend you for, for getting all these applicants and all the interest, um, and, and you, and I'm sure there's others who contribute to that as well. So nice work.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, a, a lot of our recruiting has, has been through, uh, word of mouth. People hearing about the department, the changes that are going on here, uh, the direction things are going. And I think that, uh, you know, the candidates are finding the, uh, the environment, the atmosphere here, um, positive. And people want, want to come work for us. And, uh, like I said, all, almost every single one of our applicants has been through word of mouth and they're, and every single one of them are, you know, they're all local, local residents.
Any other questions? Thank you all. Uh, next up, we have the fire department report, Chief Daley.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so the, the, our testing will start for the fourth member on our engine company. That'll be on the fifth of this month. And, um, per the grant, it was on February 2nd was the actual cutoff date. I had to go 180 days, um, prior to that in order to make sure that we went out, um, for candidates and so forth. But, uh, so now the fifth will be our, our testing date. So we'll hire shortly after that for the engine company. Uh, ride-alongs have started with, um, with, uh, the Fire Academy graduates. So it looks like we might have a potential of having some good candidates filling the resident reserve program, um, in the future. They do three ride-alongs with each shift and they're observed for 12 hours. And then, um, from the performance that we know also, from what they did in the academy, then we make a decision on whether they become part of our program or not. Uh, one of our candidates for the, the high school cadet program, uh, left this semester, but we're picking up, uh, another person to fill that slot. So we'll still have two cadets from the high school, uh, being a part of our program. One of them, uh, Josue Diaz, he is actually following the track right now. He's getting his EMT and then he will, um, continue on after he graduates. Uh, on the grant front, uh, let's see, the first financial report was submitted with the AFG grant. Uh, it was a really easy report. We haven't spent any money yet, so that was an easy one. Uh, DOLA report is being finalized, uh, for the station two. Uh, this will be wrapped up for year 2021. There is still funding, but I haven't really been a part of the financial aspect of that project. Uh, apparatus truck one is back in service after being out for almost a half a year, uh, unfortunately. But I think that we finally, they just don't make parts for 1988, uh, Pierce engine truck anymore. So we had to, uh, try to get a, a piece, um, taken care of for the outriggers and also for the stick to raise. And, uh, we finally got that. Engine one is in the shop with multiple issues currently right now. Um, differential lock, uh, the diff won't, um, engage. It has a, a, uh, bearing, a rear wheel bearing that, uh, that kind of blew and it got all of the brakes and now you got to replace the brakes. There's some gauges out, et cetera, on that piece of equipment. But, uh, it's over at Fleet's right now and it should be in service here pretty soon. We're running off. But it's over at Fleet's right now and it should be in service here pretty soon. We're running off engine two. Let's see, we're still looking into the air and light issue that we had. It's about a $6,000 fix, but we're trying to figure out alternatives for that fan motor that went out on that engine. Pre-construction meeting went well in Boise, Idaho. That was for the type three engine. Very excited about this piece of equipment on, we just, during pre-construction, we went over all the, you know, the, the actual specifics of the apparatus and how we would configure the compartments and how we'd put our gear on it, et cetera, for that dual use purpose of wildland urban interface, but also as a response vehicle as we normally use like a type one engine. So station two update, they are, I don't know if you've driven by there, but some of the the siding is up on the metal structure. The roof should be, be put on this next week. And they're going to the second floor in about two weeks on the operation side. Trusses should be here pretty soon and then they can dry in hopefully sometime in February. So that's pretty exciting also. So we had a meeting, emergency services that are inter-agency meeting. And this is to recharge our emergency service council. So I'll probably get into this a little more once the bylaws have been adopted and so forth through Board of County Commissioners. But this is just our local emergency response agencies getting together, having a formalized way to be able to conduct business with, you know, or for our local response and to tackle big projects needed in all of Lake County. So we had an emergency service council a very long time ago before it went under the Office of Emergency Management. They still have some criteria that they have to meet emergencies, Office of Emergency Management with Emergency Service Council. This is just different. This is at a local level, emergency operations, working together on big projects. So, and I would like to go over statistics next time with you for annual year last year. I just don't have those in front of me and going back and forth on my computer is, is not something that I really would care to do here with you this evening. So I'm, I'm home, I have COVID. So so that is pretty much my report for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Chief Daley? Chief, I did notice that, that Fire Marshal Boyle has received his certificate as a fire investigator. So please pass on our congratulations to him.
I, I will do that. Thank you, Mayor. I will do that.
I have a quick comment. This is something that Chief Daley and I have been talking about. As you just heard from Chief Daley, our, our, our fire engine number one is in the shop yet again. This, this fire engine has been a headache from day one. It's only five years old and it continues to break down. We had talked about what we're going to do in 2023. And we, I believe, you know, between Chief Daley and I talked about maybe what we need is another type one engine. Now that's going to be a $700,000 bill. So it's not, it's not a cheap anything and the fire management board needs to meet in this first quarter. And if we're going to do that, we may need to make the commitment to 2023 earlier rather than later because it's taking a full year to put anything in place from the time you've ordered, as we've seen with the type three engine. So I just, it's just a heads up. It's a conversation right now. But you know, our fire service, because that type one, one engine has not been a good piece of equipment. It leaves us very vulnerable. Any, any questions for the chief? Thank you much, Chief. Hope you feel better.
Thanks.
You can go back to partying now. Okay, next up is the street department.
Well, I remember March 3rd, you know, I know we had a little bit of snow. Eastside, snow, southside, snow. And you kind of had a little bit of trouble as far as finding out what to do, like that whole, the labor works. That kind of works and they kind of gave me a port. Get a lot more guys to do, which we've gotten a lot, you know, a lot. High repairs. Signage was number one, key, the ball of view. The only guy signs signage is, uh, plan the pattern. And I was talking to Carl electric for March 4th. For the street jury. The standard they just put out, I'll have them hit the whites, they got them ten. And drop them once this coming up week. Get those six force during, and then they put their standards up. And a lot of building repairs, Christmas decorations, police vehicles, snow. Plow, snow removal. December. We got a hit with snow pretty good. Did a snow plowing, snow, minimal sand, trash. Worked with truck electric with lot repaired, parking, which was, uh, chanted out. The heaters were out. Equipment, Christmas decorations and police vehicle service. You know, we got a 18-day period for, I don't know, last 18 days, probably set a full fit. Lot, lot, lot. Got pretty worth 18 days straight. The 25th, we were snow plowing, the 26th, we snowed on Harrison. 27th, snow removal on the half blocks, smudge. Storages on neck downs. 28th, snow plowing, the 29th, snow plowing. The 30th, snow removal on Harrison. On the 1st, January, snow plowing. The 3rd, snow removal on Harrison. The 4th, snow removal on Main Street, proud of Jim O'Neil's, Chuker Harrison. That's the one that's growing. Down the lawn. Down to Harrison. Um, smart level, um, on fine, unpopular, um, snow storages, that'd be the hundred blocks, neck downs. Half blocks. Uh, the 6th. The snow plowing, the 7th, the snow removal on Harrison, the 10th, removal on neck downs. Um, east end, that's like half blocks. Uh, the 11th, ice removal on 7th, E7, depopular. The 12th, ice removal, E8, E6, depopular. Uh, 13th, removal on West 4th, 25th, uh, Meter Street. The 14th, ice removal, um, West 7th, West 6th, impala. West removal on West 2nd, just the closest we could. That's, uh, it was December.
Any questions for Tommy?
I have a comment. In, in 2021, it appears we did a great deal more labor for the county than we did in the previous year.
The reason why is I grew, uh, no bit of touch up with Mike Irwin. As far as if, you know, as far as I ever needed in college people. You know, starting at two spot, you know, speaking to guys. So it was pretty much, you know, yeah, yeah, kind of different. And, you know, there's plenty of friends that I had called Mike Irwin. Four guys out, which, you know, he was there. As as, four trucks each time, but we didn't know.
But you also supplied a lot of manpower and trucks out for the Hafner project for the county, right?
Um, yes, and that, that week I was out, um, all week. You know, that was one of the big projects that they had, which um, you know, that was already timed down before I was even supervising. But you know, over that.
I'm, it's not a criticism. I think it's great. I mean, you know, I think the, the more we, we cooperate with the county and they help us, the better I like it.
You know, I'm actually a, a very, got with a lot of contractors as far as snow removal, whereas whatever needed, they're, they're I've got a lot of these ones that's why. Um, I think that for street jury, which
Okay, thank you.
Cisco, what's your?
Yeah, thanks. Apologies if this was spoken to and I missed it. I, I couldn't hear everything you were saying, Tommy. Uh, but per our last meeting, it sounded like snow clearing and plowing was going really well and um, we were curious about how the actual snow removal was going. And especially when you, you have to like kind of interact with private entities, homeowners or subcontractors or whatever who've made big piles, like is there any progress on that? And again, sorry if you spoke to that already.
You, you know, we got a, we got a, uh, snow storage that is 150 yards, you know, a full on half. Which we're already three quarters full, just clearing the snow off the streets. So, uh, that's that's a big plus on our end, you know, that's a lot of snow. But fun, really great. I haven't had much trouble.
What are you going to do in that snow storage, Jerry? You're just, you're just going up top. Can you still store it down below?
Yep. So we got two more fields. The two lower ones and then we got one up on Level Street. We've got a lot of places to store, uh, store some, some.
So the two thirds full is just that, the upper level?
Just the upper.
Apache田, okay, thank you.
Tommy, you've tabulated the hours that, that our street department has been to assist the county. Is there any sort of tabulation on when they've come to help us?
Well, you know, I've been marking it down, which, you know, I'll get that over to you guys on how much hours they could help us out, you know? It's, you know, I don't want to go over too much working for them, too much working for us because I, you know, really you know, try not to get them caught up, I'm not trying to get my guys caught up. So you know, it's, we're trying to split it out into as far as.
Do you have a feel for how many times they've come out and helped?
Um, so they've actually helped, came out and helped six times.
Okay. Interesting. At two in the morning?
At two o'clock in the morning.
All right. Uh, which is interesting because they don't start till three, right?
Uh, they, they actually start at two as well.
Oh, they do? Okay, let's change.
No, that's how it's always been ever since I started on the Level Street Department.
Okay.
It's always been at two o'clock for the county.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for the street department right now? Thank you. Yes, Max, sorry.
Uh, just a quick question on this is I'm assuming this is linear. Uh, I'm looking at the sheet for those that are in the screen. Is it 2020 on the left and 2021?
Yes.
And then so we have, we don't have January 22. This isn't the report out for 22, but I mean, if there's a way to I mean, there's no demarcation. It just says, if we could just change this so there's a difference.
I've been looking at someone.
Just because I was like, what, what numbers am I looking at today or highlighting what we're looking at?
Hopefully the next one you'll see will have, this whole right column will be here and then it will start.
A new one.
Into the, into the next.
This is for the last two years, I guess. And then, yeah, I just want to say that I have seen a lot of great street removal out there uh, in the, in the city. And, and I know this is kind of a a county-city issue, I think. The, the sidewalks between Safeway and the town on either side is just I'm looking at probably some of our some of, some of the most the people that need the sidewalk the most are now walking on the streets. And I feel, and I know that that kind of falls outside of your jurisdiction and I know it's also because CDO takes, takes that and just plows the slag right onto our sidewalks.
Let me ask you this. Has Tyler been clearing that sidewalk, we'll call it on the west side? Because he's, he's gotten very good at that the last couple of years. But I agree with Max. The last time I looked, it was just all piled up on the sidewalk and I was surprised.
Yeah, so Tyler, that's Tyler route is from, you know, all of Harrison to Safeway's on the west side. But like Max said, you know, we're, we clean it, snow, CDO comes through while it's back on, on the sidewalk. Now, uh.
Then, then I would say we should clean it again. I mean, we should clean it every single time there's snow on it. I mean, I I know that you're busy and I know that that's a, that, but, but first of all, Tyler has an incredible skill of using the wing on that grader to take, to clean that sidewalk and he does it really well. But I, I had noticed this winter, maybe more than in the past. Uh, the sidewalk just has, has not been walkable.
Yep. And between, and the, and the, and the bus stop at, at the Family Dollar is just a little patch. I just I mean, if we're going to have a bus stop, a municipal bus stop at Family Dollar, I feel that we need to clear the sidewalks. And you have that great snow blower. I'm just wondering if there's a way to you know, CDO puts it back and then you guys bring it back and just clear it right onto the right into the back of a truck and get it out of there instead of playing the back and forth game.
So I talked to Ryan. Ryan's the one that's found out, found the dollar. There's a couple of things that I had to talk to him. You know, he's been busy, I've been busy. So, you know, I haven't had the right time to catch, catch him. Cause I know he's been throwing the snow back on, which next time, you know, we're, there's solutions to every problem. So.
So that snow's coming from the Family Dollar side?
Yeah. So, you know, you know, I'll get with Ryan and, you know, I'm working and I'll get it cleared.
I would agree with Max. Those sidewalks are really, really critical access points for our cities.
Yep.
Yeah. And I appreciate it. I, like I said, we can always come to you and complain about something, right? So I'm not trying to make this a, you know, saying that you're not doing a great job this year. I just think that uh, if, I know that, that, that the safe routes to school are major routes, you know, for, to getting to the hospital and, and everything like that takes precedent through the city. Once you have those cleared, then you start the snow removal, getting, you know, focusing on Harrison. If there's a way to one out of every two times, extend that Safeway and just get rid of that snow off that, instead of playing the back and forth game with CDO because you take it off and they say, hey, that's our right of way. We're going to put it right back on and
So I'll get, I'll get with Tyler. We'll, we'll do something about it.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tommy.
Next up, Caitlin and Brenda?
Well, the top here, we have a recap from our last meeting. So it was written originally as animal control speed. It's tell for revenues for that. We changed that since we have the animal control officers coming on this year. So I definitely think that will be different. Well, we raised almost $5,000 in donations last year. Since many of those donations go into the general fund, we are now asking for donations from the community via local businesses. So with them as support of the vet, um, bills, vet expenses of the animals, they can donate straight to the vet. Um, they can pick up gift cards at Mountain Dogs or Greatful Paws. Then on down to animal expenses. Um, so if you just look at the bottom of the table, it kind of holds it. That way you know what our vet expenses are for each animal. So an animal that doesn't come in up to date on vaccines or fix, which is very common. A dog is going to cost us $260 to get fully vetted and a cat is $190. That is based off of our, like, from last year, but on whole, I guess, it's impressive. We could potentially go up this year. Um, currently we don't pay for food thanks to Jill and Greatful Paws. If we did, it would be about $4,000 a year. So I'll talk to the mayor about that for future years in case we aren't on the same program to get the free food for the shelter. So, um, I'll talk to the mayor about that for future years in case we aren't on the same program to get the free food for the shelter. And then at the, for the bottom of the page, I just included, um, the animal expenses over the years. So this year we did make several trips to the emergency vets. Um, so we had over one thousand three hundred dollars in emergency vet bills. That was under our annual expenses, but of course it's not that great for. And then on to the next page, we have our twenty twenty-one staff recap. So that we can look at the tiny numbers on the graph. But we had two hundred and twenty-five impounds, a hundred and fifty-four animals for united local owners from those impounds. A hundred and thirty adoptions in total, eighty-nine animals in foster care throughout the year. Sixty-three transfers in of fat dogs, puppies and kittens. Thirty-five unclaimed strays here locally, thirty-two animals surrendered from local citizens, four transfers out and zero due donations. And then currently, yes, we only have a whole dog. He does have a homework in the outer space when we're working with him to bring him transport. Both of the cats actually were adopted today. So they have no cats. Since we are doing the cat positive training program, to hold me reaching out to other Colorado shelters that are involved in the cat positive program to transfer, um, one or two cats into our pair, uh, since we need to have cats to maintain our status in the program. We did complete our PACHA statistics. Um, they're due in March. We finished them January fifth. We've received a five hundred dollar grant from the BSKJ Animal Welfare Organization. And then on Monday, we also received a thousand dollar grant from the Colorado Pet Straightforward Vet Bills for this year. We've joined, um, Shelter Animals Count National Database, Official Conscious Animal Parkers. We're working with the Colorado Animal Assistance Foundation. So it's not grants, but grants. Um, their grant opens in September, but they are also part of the Colorado Pet Overpopulation Fund. So that's the license plates that people can purchase that are support shelter. So green ones were up to at least thousand and some change. So we'll be applying for that at end of February. And then our city and county dog license fees are now the same. So it's going to be fifteen dollars for a year, forty dollars for three years. And the uninsured animals are forty dollars per year and a hundred dollars for three years. And then cats are optional to register. So for everybody, if you have an impound, the first impound we're gonna weigh, but if the animal is licensed with proper identification, because that means we can quickly call the owner. They can be notified, pick up the animal and they're not spending the day in the shelter.
Um, yeah, so, sorry. So with the snowfall, we've been getting, just I wanted to note, Kate, let you guys know. We've been getting a lot of, um, volunteers and also our community service members or anything else. And they've been helping us manage with the snow. Um, so technically, um, we don't have to rely on the city. Um, but Shanti has also helped us a lot. He's been trying to get us on the schedule for snow removal just for the parking mod. Um, we do have a lot of elderly people that come in and so I just worry about them coming out of the car and slipping and falling. Um, so we don't want that to happen. Um, we said he would also, um, just hold up with us, also talk to the mayor about our needs. He's been helping us with our washer and dryer to keep it up to date. Um, because the washer tends to just give us code. So we need to change the filter. Um, we don't have any of the adequate tools to do that. Um, so our staff member, Jason, has also done that for us in the past. But, um, in the future when he leaves, um, we have to get to that. And, you know, we're likely to rely on Shanti to do that for us, but he's been awesome. I just wanted to point that out in helping the shelter as well.
Um, we're hoping to also have volunteer of the month in this future.
Very, very thorough. Uh, I would like to ask you, cause we, we have an ordinance that is going to, first reading of an ordinance that will move some animal fees, uh, from ordinance and then we'll, then we'll have it in the fee schedule. It'll be by reference. Uh, are, in terms of our fee schedule, we're going to be considering in the future, uh, will it align with the county or do we need to get the county to work with us on that?
Yeah, if we bring, currently the city fees are lower than the county fees. So if we bring the city fees up, they'll be the same.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the animal shelter? Thank you. Nice job. Okay, next up we have the liquor licensing report. Any thoughts on that? All right, very done. We move on. Uh, we have the building, uh, department, uh, uh, that we get each month, um, about spending a lot of time on it. The graphs tell a huge story in terms of what's happened in, in twenty, what has happened in twenty twenty-one. It is, looks pretty underlimping in terms of building permits and inspections. So. For those of you.
How much of that is rail yard, uh, related, you think?
So I couldn't hear that, Cisco.
Oh, how much of that, that increase is rail yard related? Is it mostly rail yard, you think? I'm sure you can answer exactly that.
It's not mostly rail yard at all. These numbers are so large. You know, in the rail yard, we're talking about twenty building permits that they pulled in twenty twenty-one. Uh, but these numbers are huge.
And which of these numbers instances of that specific thing happening?
Of somebody coming in and wanting to build a building of some sort and having to pull a permit with the county to do it. All right. Yeah, I think ultimately, uh, you know, five years from now, the rail yard will be a, a, a much bigger part of this, but right now they're really not. Sales tax comparisons. I do have a question, Donna, and I apologize. I meant to ask you today because as we look at, at, uh, sales tax comparisons, we're nine hundred and fourteen thousand dollars ahead of budget. However, when we look at the financials, we're nowhere near that. We're, there, there's about a, a, a four or five hundred thousand dollar delta.
That's because we don't receive the December numbers and, or December money until January. So, we did receive that check, but it was for sales tax. We received two hundred and sixty-three thousand, um, in sales tax and then marijuana sales tax, we received thirty-eight hundred. So if you add those two numbers to the financial statement, it would, it would match the sales.
Wait, okay, thank you very much. That's, that's what I, I needed to know. Now, I know I've asked this before, but these are two months.
They will. As far as the other history is concerned, it's two months behind because when I receive that statement from the county, the one I just received, it's dated December. But it has come to my attention that they actually received this money a month ago. So it is actually from November.
But we don't receive it until month of tenth of January. Yeah.
So then it gets recorded on this in February.
Well, yes. Now this, these numbers that I just received in January is the December numbers on the sales tax comparison. I try to, I try to line that up with what the county sends me as a statement state because that's what the auditors will do. Does that make sense?
So the numbers I'm seeing for December twenty twenty-one are actually from December?
They're December.
They're November.
The December reports, the November actual collections.
Okay.
I have the actual numbers if anybody wants to see them.
Uh, the actual numbers for what, Tracy?
Sale tax. I do the sale tax analysis for the EDC. So I have the spreadsheet for the end, uh, twen- or through the twenty twenty-one, if you'd like to see it.
What Donna and I have discussed, and we've, we've all, in these, in these, uh, sales tax number, just on this report, it's always included the marijuana tax. And in, uh, starting in twenty twenty-two, we're going to start not having the marijuana tax in this number. It won't change as dramatically, but it will change this. Uh, and so, you know, the comparison point may be a little off, but it's not going to be off enough to make it.
I think the marijuana sales tax was fifty-six thousand.
For the year?
For the year.
Perfect.
And Tracy, would your data show us things like what types of, what categories of, of purchasing are accounting for those sales taxes? Is that the type of data you have?
Um, yes, I, can I share my screen?
Yes, please.
All right. Oh, Lori's gonna have to allow me to share my screen. Oh, still can't do it.
Sorry, Tracy, one second.
Okay.
All right, Tracy, you should be able to share now.
Let's keep you in mind.
Oh, this is, uh, twenty twenty-one for the city, broken down by, um, N A I C S codes.
Tracy, is that something you could send to, to all of us?
Sure. I, I send it to Donna, but I, I'd be happy to send it out. It's got, it's got everything. So it's got the full county. Um, it's got whether the sale tax was remote or, um, not remote. So we can check that. Um, and the other one I track is the lodging taxes. Um, and I just wanna bring up one thing. Um, me, move this down. For, um, so the top, this top one, this is the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. This is everybody. This is the city and this is the county. And I just want to show that since we brought in lodging refs to handle our, um, short-term rentals, we are up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars where the county is only up sixty thousand for the whole year. So they are definitely paying for themselves. But anyway, I just wanted to, um, show that and I'd be happy to send this out to everybody if they, if they want to.
Love to be able to spend some time, you know, digesting that, those numbers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have good eyesight.
You, you wanna borrow Tim's glasses? It looked like a big blur to me.
That was a setup, wasn't it?
Okay, uh, thank you, Tracy. Uh, Donna, uh, how about financials?
Well, I kind of want to give a brief overview of what our year begins would look like. Um, after I do my adjusted journal entries for the year. So I kind of tried to make a note. And first thing I want to say is that we have finally received the FEMA grant for the COVID. We received thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we nineteen thousand of it went to the general fund, eighteen thousand and some went to fire fund, for the fire department. But if you're looking at those financials, you'll see that the beginning revenue for the year was four million five hundred and twenty-seven and some change. Um, but we have additional revenue that's going to be coming in or has come in from January. Um, and it's going to be an additional revenue of one point one million dollars. Now, of course, two hundred and sixty-three thousand of it is sales tax, but the other we, we've still got outstanding, the Tabor Opera House grant revenue. We, we, we should be getting about almost, about seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars from the grant for the Tabor Opera House, which will go into two thousand twenty-one because that's when it was expanded. So, if I add in all of those additional revenues that will go in here in the next coming months, January, February, March, as we receive that, those revenues, the ending revenue will be um, five point three million. So we're nine hundred and three thousand dollars over budget. Um, part of that is because I took out, and this may be a little bit too confusing, but I actually took out the revenue from the American Rescue Plan that we did not extend in two thousand twenty-one. So I kind of tried to make it to where we're going to be spending that money in two thousand twenty-two. So I took out it as revenue, just for these numbers. But anyway, that puts us up a budget of nine hundred and three thousand dollars. So, um, that's pretty good.
How is that going to affect our total fund equity? Is it going to add seven hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand dollars to the total fund equity? What, what, what number do you think it adds?
Um, it should, it, well, I think it's going to be, if we look at it in two thousand twenty-one, it's probably going to be, um, closer to just the, the, almost like the one, one, closer to a million.
So the total fund equity will go to three point eight?
Right, yeah.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, then I wanted to do, the expenditures do the same thing. So in the financial statement, the beginning expenditures is four point three million. Um, I have a hundred thousand out of the street, um, maintenance for paving. Um, I rounded it to a hundred thousand and I hope that's probably, it's close to a hundred thousand. So I figured I'd just move a hundred thousand over to that street department or street paving fund, if that's okay with you guys. So the ending expenditures would be four point four million dollars. So we're actually under budget by thirty-eight thousand. Which I know when I did the supplemental budget, I, I did it at like five hundred and something total. But I was still thinking that we may pay some, um, American Rescue Plan funds. Um, I guess, I didn't know where the Tabor Opera House was in the land and we're gonna have to pay some more for that. So obviously at that time of year, I got to make sure that I account for every possible expenditure. So the supplemental budget was way over, but I'd be, we're, we're better way over than under. Um, if we go to the fire department, on the balance sheet, it says we have one point four million in revenues. Um, we have additional revenue of a hundred and eighty-one thousand. We still owe, or we still, that county still owes us two months of, um, their operational fund. So we should get a hundred and fifty-six thousand and some from the county. We did get that eighteen thousand from FEMA. Um, Colorado Mountain College owes us six thousand dollars for, um, some outbuilding of the headwaters trading center. So if we add all of those in, we're at one point six four five, which puts us two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars over budget. Now, of course, that is mostly from wildfires revenue. Um, and then if you get to the expenditures, I just did it as a total of all three funds from the fire department, which means the operational. fire department, which means the operational, um, and fire fund itself, the expenditures were one point five million, which is a hundred and eighteen thousand over budget, but there again, we ended up spending money to pay for people with the avails wildfires. So the expenditures is a lot less than the revenue of what we did not budget still. So really, we have a surplus of revenue over expenditures of seventy-two thousand dollars in the fire. Um, one thing I do wanna say though is that we, we actually got notified yesterday, or Friday, about our workers comp audit, so we are gonna owe money to the workers comp for those wildfire wages. So that, you know, how much that's gonna be, I, I can guess four or five thousand dollars maybe? I'm not sure, but those will kinda offset them a little bit. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about is that in the January county payment, we did receive eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars in LURA funds. So, um, that's the biggest we've got. So year-to-date, in the LURA revenue, we have twelve thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Donna, did they say why only eight thousand dollars? Did it reference anything?
Yeah, I, you know, I need to go talk to probably, I don't know if it's Patrick and Miguel, but I need to talk to them about LURA, and I need to talk to them about property tax. Um, it seems like we are lacking money in both of those areas, so I need to see why. I have not gotten over there yet.
I know you try to keep a separate accounting for the fire fund balance, uh, and, uh, and I know that is really reflecting here. Uh, but going into twenty twenty-two, I'd like to sit down with you and, and really understand where we are, especially going into the first quarter, if we, if we feel like we need to make an obligation for a fire, so. As we can see, we've already elaborated, uh, of all the departments, they're all, I think, police departments half a percent over. Um, the fire department's three tenths of a percent under. Um, and the, the animal shelter is just something that, that Caitlin and I are working on. They were eleven, eleven percent over, over budget, but their, their budget is so small, it really doesn't affect us all, but dramatically in terms of, of, uh, total expenditures. Any questions for Donna on the financials? Okay, thank you. Bills are, bills are up next.
I'll stay here.
Okay. At this time, uh, a quick review of the bills and, uh, any questions? All of them. Okay, any questions about the bills? Tracy, Cisco? Okay. David, do you feel like you've had time to flip them over?
Yes, sir.
Um, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Councilmember Jesse moves to pay the bills.
Bill seconds.
Be able to discuss them. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, all were in favor. You can go ahead and pay those bills, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Please, uh, that would be great. It's five till eight, we'll come back at eight o'clock and resume.
Thank you.
Five-minute break, everybody. Looks like your visits have been good. Little down, little down from last year.
Is it?
Well, early season.
I think Jackson would be there. I, I see that on my computer.
Yeah.
No less.
What's that? So the early season was tough with this new situation?
Yeah.
Uh, we're catching up, so, that's good. Also, last year was a break of years, so.
Are you?
Keep up with those numbers.
Are you back home, finally?
No.
No?
This is still soon.
I saw her, she didn't look too bad.
She feels like she.
She just looks very, really sucks.
I'll be back home this weekend for sure, at least, hopefully I'll be back by, before then.
She does a test negative or something at thirty-five?
Uh, not necessarily, but I don't think she's comfortable.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, you got some tests.
Yeah, we have those, you know, quick tests here in the city, are, are taking warm. So you don't hurt. It's just like vaccines are probably not a, a lot, but I, I just have no explanation on how.
Keep, right?
Getting sick.
E- even back before.
Cause I had an employee get sick too.
Even back before, we had, we had one, one case, I remember, we had like, everybody in the family got it, or at least had positive antibodies. This is before the vaccine, but they showed they got it, except for one individual who never showed antibodies, never tested positive. We had no, you know, like that.
Isn't that weird?
Yep, and they all lived together.
I have a theory, I think that that person, uh, who could be me, uh, when I spill something on the kitchen counter, they look it all. It's all about the immune system. But those, uh, cross-country girls are back at it again. And you got a quick one.
They, ah, you know, she, yeah, she's all right. She had a great time, uh, at the full one ski. She said she and Lila and, uh, and the girl without, has the faster contingent, and then took all these great pictures where you can't recognize anyone, because it's all dark. Sounds like that, I think.
Okay, it's eight o'clock, we are back. Uh, Tracy, Cisco? Cisco's taking a nap.
Oh, hurting children.
Yeah, that could be. There he is. Okay, uh, next up, we, next we have three resolutions and an ordinance. It'll be first reading of the ordinance, so technically not a, a public hearing, but if anybody uh, wants to, to chime in on the ordinance, uh, we'd be happy to hear from you. Uh, at this time, we have, um, this is resolution number three, series of twenty twenty-two, resolution adopting a fee schedule for the city of Leadville. And I would, uh, Christiana can chime in, I would add, you know, the animal control, the animal fees are not in here, cause we were going to pass an ordinance first and then add them into this fee schedule. So that will be a sep- a separate resolution item in a, in a, probably what we're gonna do. Uh, Christiana, would you like to give us some, some, uh, idea of what you had to do to get this fee schedule together? Because I think there were fees missing from it.
There were, um, can you guys hear me okay? Great, um, yeah, so I was able to review the fee schedule and what I was looking for. Um, were, I was essentially just making sure that any fees that were listed in your code to be adopted by resolution and set by resolution were actually in your fee schedule. Um, there were a few that were missing, um, a couple of appeal fees, some filing fees for subdivisions. Um, and the other kind of bigger thing that I did was, um, look at the marijuana fees and confirm that your liquor fees were also up to date. Um, the marijuana fees were quite out of date. Um, your marijuana ordinances for medical and retail marijuana, um, are older at this point. And, um, over the last three or four years, the state has made a number of changes. Um, and so I just made sure that the fees, the marijuana fees in your fee schedule reflect what municipalities are allowed to collect, um, under state law. So those have been revamped and updated, um, and, uh, I worked with the mayor to, uh, make sure that we had some other fees, like I said, that were noted in your code to be set by resolution and, uh, were missing. I also added your records request fees. They weren't actually in your fee schedule, they're on your records request form, um, but it's, in my opinion, advisable to have those in your fee schedule, just so it's there with all the other fees and hopefully more easily accessible for people to find.
Do we have any questions about the fee schedule? Other than, uh, state-controlled fees, were there any major adjustments raising fees or? I think there were adjustments to marijuana fees, correct me if I'm wrong, Christiana? I believe you corrected those in this fee schedule?
That's right, yeah. Um, those were the ones that we corrected, uh, the marijuana fees are the ones that we corrected in the fee schedule. Um, as far as any other fees, um, that aren't, you know, dictated or controlled by state ordinance, um, as far as I know, um, these fees are consistent with at least last year.
Thank you. And as we can see, Caitlin, you know, when we get to that, putting the animal fees in it, Caitlin's done a very thorough job, was getting us ready for that. Uh, what's the, the, uh, reference? If there are no other questions for Christiana, I would, uh, entertain a motion.
Remove, go, go.
Yes, an easy one, I can handle this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna cut, or kill. Let's remember, Hill moves to adopt resolution three, series twenty twenty-two, a resolution adopting a fee schedule for the city of Leadville.
Green seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Councilmember Fregancy.
Yes.
Mayor Plutron Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Liu.
Yes.
Mayor Lavey.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, we have, uh, resolution number four. Next up, we have, uh, resolution number four. Resolution number four, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution setting the term of office for the appointed city treasurer. Christiana?
Thanks, Mayor, so I, um, put this resolution on the agenda, requested that it be put on the agenda um, because, uh, the city treasurer office is an elected position and when that, uh, position got no elected or nobody was elected to that position in November, there was technically a vacancy and so, um, in appointing, um, Allison to be your city treasurer, you're filling a vacancy and there are specific state rules about how long and a, a person appointed to that office can stay in that office. Um, and so this resolution is essentially a formal record, uh, just setting the, um, term of office for the appointed city treasurer to be consistent with state law. And, um, what that says is, so for the twenty twenty-one election, um, the city treasurer was to be elected for a four-year term. Um, and when you appoint somebody to that position, when there's a vacancy, they can be appointed to that office for, or, um, until the next regular election, so in two years, um, that position will be up for election again to fill the remainder of the four-year term, so two more years, if we can actually find somebody to be elected, um, to city treasurer. Otherwise, they'll be appointed again, uh, for, to, uh, oh my goodness, excuse me, to complete that term, uh, through the, uh, until the November twenty twenty-five election.
Any questions for Christiana? It's really the same thing Cisco had to do in this last election. So it, it's not uncommon when we have, uh, an appointment. Over the election. Okay, uh, in which case I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilmember Frigenti moves to adopt resolution number four, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution setting the term of office for the appointed city treasurer.
No seconds. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Wabi.
Yeah.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Procham Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Frigenti.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next resolution, number five, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution designating two interim de- deputy chief clerks. Um, as, as you well know, the reason for this is we, we have lost our, our deputy city clerk. Uh, she has taken another job and, uh, at this time in the interim, until we hire a new one, uh, we need, uh, people that signature authority on resolutions in the offices. Christiana?
That about covers it, Mayor. Uh, yeah, it, it's, it's for that and i- in case there are any, um, duties that fall to the deputy city clerk in the time when the city is seeking to hire a new de- deputy city clerk, it helps to kind of, um, you know, for two people to share those responsibilities and just allocate workload a little bit better as well.
Any questions for Christiana? Thank you, then I would entertain a motion, please.
Green moves to adopt resolution number five, series of twenty twenty-two, a resolution designating two interim deputy city clerks.
Lorenson seconds.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Councilmember Frigenti.
Yeah.
Mayor Procham Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Mayor Wabi.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenson.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, next up, ordinance number one of series twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending various sections of the Leadville municipal code to remove specific fees for the Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter and authorizing animal shelter fees to be set by resolution. And this is first reading of this ordinance. Um, open to discussion? Uh, Christiana, what insights could you give us?
Uh, well, there are only, uh, based on my review of the code, there are only two, uh, specific fees set out in the municipal code, um, that go to the animal shelter right now, and those are impoundment fees and licensing fees. Um, y- you can see in the council communication form, um, and also in the ordinance, I believe, um, what those are, the impoundment fee is set by, in your code, as ten dollars per day and licensing fees are thirty dollars or ten dollars depending on whether the animal is spayed or neutered. Um, and so what these ordinance does is, um, take those specific fees out. Um, it makes those, or authorizes those fees, and then, um, I added a new section, um, just stating that, uh, those fees are authorized to be set by resolution of city council. And I also added information that if the animal shelter, um, provides any other services like adoption or whatever other type of service the animal shelter might provide for the public, um, then fees for those services can also be set by resolution of city council. Um, and that is, that is all this ordinance does. Happy to answer any questions.
Christiana? I would entertain a motion, please. This one has a lot of words. Christian, would you like to give this one a shot?
Sure, um, council member Luna Lev moved to adopt ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending various sections of the Leadville municipal code to remove specific fees for Lake, or Leadville Lake County Animal Shelter and authorizing animal shelter fees to be set by resolution on first reading. I further move to schedule second reading of this ordinance for city council's regular meeting on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Little second, thank you. Is there any discussion? I would say, we've been talking about this and thinking about it for years, and so I'm glad for it finally to come to fruition. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorenson.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil.
Yes.
Mayor Wabi.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leo.
Yes.
Now, Mayor Procham Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Frigenti.
Yes.
Councilmember Thar.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. At this time, we have the public meetings planner. Any changes to what we're looking at?
So we have our work session next week, right?
Uh, we do, on the twenty-fifth, that's in the parking.
Yep.
Work session.
Can't wait.
Parking, parking work session twenty-fifth. Twenty-fifth, on my, there it is.
Mayor, if I may, if I could bring these two, uh, meetings up, there is a first reading for the ordinances for formula business or planning and zoning. And we didn't know if we wanted to do that on March first, a regular meeting, or have a special meeting on February twenty-second.
Is there any reason why we wouldn't do it on? Oh, you said March first?
Yes, sir. It was originally scheduled for February fifteenth. But because of the thirty-day notice that I missed.
Oh, I see.
By a few days, I'm sorry.
I understand, okay.
And we can either have a special meeting or we could just wait till the March first regular meeting.
I don't know that we need to do a special meeting, the moratorium is, isn't up, we're not close to it, so I think we're in good shape. What does city council think?
Is that enough time?
Christiana, if you wanna.
Moratorium ending and us being able to get that done in two readings?
The answer is yes, because that'll be the first of March, the second would be the first meeting in April, and the moratorium's up April the twentieth.
It's up May third, but.
Well, I, that, that may be correct, okay, sorry. So I, I think, I think we found a, a few questions.
Yeah, if we can do that in, yeah.
We may need to have a work session in, in February, but, uh, use that for something else.
Also, there, um, the Board of County Commissioners has asked city council in the Lake County Spulters District to have a meeting with all three entities on a Thursday evening in February. They have suggested February third, seventeenth, or twenty-fourth, from six to eight, they're thinking about maybe doing it at CMC to try to engage their tech system that could handle a larger capacity of virtual.
Can you remind us what the purpose of that joint meeting is?
Uh, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss affordable housing and long-term facility needs. Part of the meeting will be discussing where we are in our affordable housing journey and the next step.
For city councils, is there preference the third, the seventeenth, over twenty-fourth?
Um, I would vote for the third, there's a Build a Generation meeting the twenty-fourth, and the state Nordic races are the seventeen.
I'm also unavailable on the twenty-fourth.
Good. I am unavailable the third.
Who else?
I could do all three.
Okay, uh, Max, Tim, we're looking at third, it seems to be, unfortunately, Christian will be able to do it, but he seems to be the only one.
Yeah.
Third works, I mean, the third's pretty, pretty quick. Are they gonna be okay with that?
And I don't know if they can pull that together that quick. Um, I know, um, the last, uh, Tim from the county was talking to Bunny at, at Lake County School District to see what a good date.
I guess our choice, right, the second will be the third, and if they can't pull the third together, we'll reconsider it on meeting on the first. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts on the, on the plan? Okay. Thank you very much. This time, mayor's report, I, what am I still on, there's a lot going on. Uh, having trouble keeping track of what is and is not important at the city council in terms of all the different meetings. I, I would say, they had a retreat for Main Street today, it's just, you know, when they recount all they accomplished in twenty twenty-one, it's, it's phenomenal what they've done as an organization in the last year. Main Street's been, been good for us for many years, but now it's like they, they've reached a different level, so I'm very pleased.
I'm really excited about some of their ideas for coming year, too.
Yes. Anybody else have anything, council reports?
I have a question, not to add to all of our, so many irons in the fire. Um, just regarding, at some point last year, uh, we had brought up the, the UTV sign at the very end of town, right before the term, that exceeded the sign, um, dimension limits for the new business.
You know, it, it did not, uh, exceed the size of the sign. And, and this is actually something I wouldn't mind seeing changed in ordinance, I'd like to bring it up because in the commercial district, that the, it's a two-hundred square foot limit, which is huge.
So our original, our original perception of the sign exceeded the limits was incorrect.
Correct, and so, but, but we, there was also the concern that was blocking the view of traffic. So I had Commissioner Edwards go out and, and say, tell us, if, if, if you think that this needs to, to be changed, and he came back and said, no. So we left it at that.
So one question would be, you know, at some future date, do we re, re-establish sign size limitations in the commercial?
I would love to do that because I think two hundred square feet is way too big.
It's really big.
Ten by twenty.
Huh?
That's ten by twenty.
Yeah, it's huge.
It's a massive sign.
It is, I mean, I, I didn't, I didn't realize until we got into this, that that was the rule, you know, downtown, it's, uh, what, twenty-five square feet or not? Is that correct? What is our downtown? Uh, you know, we, we keep it under control. And, uh, and actually, you know, of course, with, you know, we're, we're talking about the formula business overlay, but that's in the viewscape of our downtown, so that bothers me too. Uh, right, the second, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, within our ordinance.
Okay. Can I add it to our planning calendar or something?
Oh, please do. Please do, because we have a lot of ordinance changes, you know, that we need to consider the next year, but I, I would love to add that.
Once living in the summer.
Yeah.
Mayor, another, uh, question I have for you with, uh, uh, our city administrator joining us today. Has there been any, given any thought on, on, we were gonna transfer from a strong marrow system to a weak marrow system and how that transfer goes and what that means? I mean, I, I mean, how, she starts on the fourteen.
Right.
Do we actually have to have a resolution and ordinance to do that?
We, we do have those ready, they're on my desk, uh, Christiana, you're discussing those. But that does not actually change to a weak mayor system. Because it doesn't change, state statute, that would change if we go to a city manager. I know it, it sounds like a nuance, uh, but my thought on that is, I would like to see us go to the ballot in twenty twenty-three to actually change our code, uh, so that we would have a city manager rather than a city administrator. And at that point, we become a weak mayor system.
So how would it work once, um, the city administrator comes on, like, are, are you going to relinquish day-to-day duties?
Yes, okay, yes, and department reports.
Okay.
Those will, and it's in the job description, uh, for that city administrator. The answer is, it, that person will be in the back of, uh, uh, city, uh, yeah, city manager as opposed to a city administrator. That, that's, that's why we structured this, and we were, we were, it was recommended by our attorneys and by Dole to do that first, and then go to the ballot. And that's, that's what I, I hope for us to do.
Okay. So test phase.
What's that? Yes. Yeah, so the election twenty twenty-three will also be for a mayor.
I'd like to bring something up.
Please.
Um, so I, I attended a tourism panel meeting this morning. Uh, I would like to get council's thoughts on this. Um, the mayor and I had discussed briefly, um, about keeping that one point nine-two percent goes to the tourism panel in the city budget. And then, having some sort of mechanism for the tourism panel to access that money as they need it. Um, this morning, it was brought to my attention that, that actually is not planned. Plan is to go ahead and relinquish those ones to the county. And they would hold it separate from the county collections. So the two, the two would be separate, but still the county's money. Brings a concern to me that, you know, once you say that money doesn't have any restrictions, then people start going crazy. That's what they want to use it for. And as soon as we turn that money over to the county, we lose our leverage with what that, what that gets used for. So I just wonder if anybody else has any thoughts on that, and if, if we should actually just relinquish the money to the county and have them hold it separate? Or if there's any way that we can keep that money in the city's budget and allow the tourism panel to invoice us or, or do whatever, um, to get that money as it's needed? That's, that's the way I would rather see it, that way we still have some leverage. We don't like what they're trying to do with the money, then we can refuse them.
I would say, to Tim's point, I looked at, you know, Tim and I did discuss that, after that conversation with Tim, I, I, I started. I, I started asking some, some questions. And one of them was, does the tourism panel have its own account of any county? And they didn't. Because we, what we talked about is, what if we just send it directly to the tourism panel and it doesn't go through the county? I don't know that that would actually solve the problem because the tourism panel is still a function of the county. So I, it's, it's a I agree with Tim entirely. I think there is an opportunity for abuse of that money by the county. And in fact, I, I see a possibility that that could actually happen. And that's another conversation we've had. So I don't want to get into too much detail there, but I am concerned. I just don't know how to, how to make what you want happen. I'm not sure.
I'm wondering, is there, because it, originally the funding source was set up through the county and we remitted that one point thirty percent to the county. Is, is there something legal in there that needs to be changed in order to have the city peel off their contribution?
Here's the problem that I see. Legally, the tourism plant panel doesn't exist separately from the county. So how do we go about that? I, I mean, I, I've opened the idea. It's going to be wrong, but, but I don't know how you get around that. Now, they said today in the meeting that, that, that the county has agreed to set up a separate earmarked account for that money as tourism panel money. But, but Tim's right. It's not restricted the same way that the state restricts lodging tax money going to the tourism panel. So it leaves, leaves the use of that money more open to interpretation. That's, that's where I am, Tim. Who else?
Well, I'm just, I want us to be able to have leverage. In other words, if we don't, if we don't see the money is going to be spent as we intended, then what is, what is our pushback? I mean, how can we say, no, that's not what our intention was. We don't want the money to be used like that. So how can we prevent that situation?
Well, intentionally because our, the, the ballot says that this is, this is going to, to, to fulfill the needs of the tourist panel. I don't remember the exact wording, but it was very specific about it being tourism panel money. So I'm not quite sure where to go with that. Cristiana, do you have any thoughts? I mean, this is, this is a real tricky proposition.
It is. So what you're, what the ballot language said and what your ordinance says is that the revenues from your accommodations tax will be used for specifically concerning the tourism panel for the financial support of the Lake County Tourism Panel such that the tourism panel maintains the revenues it would have received from the Lake County Lodging Tax if the city's tax hadn't been passed. So I, I think that it's absolutely proper for the county and the county should be, you know, earmarking those funds that it receives from the city for the tourism panel. Beyond that, I guess I'm, I'm not entirely sure what else we could, the city could ask them to do other than earmarking it for the tourism panel. Because as long as that money is going toward the tourism panel, that fulfills the, at least as far as the language of the ballot and the language of your ordinance goes, that fulfills that purpose.
So a, a second level question would be to Tim's point. If we really didn't like the way the money was being used, would we have any right to withhold it?
That might have to be a case-by-case basis question, Mayor. I, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what situation would prompt the city to say, hey, that's not how we intended this to be used. So, so I'm not sure unless I, I.
Okay. I, I don't want to get any deeper into the detail of, of, you know, some of the conversations we've heard about how it might be used because it's very speculative. And I'm not at all sure about that.
And if you want to talk about that offline, I'm, I'm happy to have that.
I'd like to have that conversation offline to give you a little more detail.
Okay.
But Tim's pretty fully informed about that possibility, too, so. Any other thoughts, Tim?
No, that's all I have.
Let's see what Cristiana can introduce us all as we get more specific.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other city council reports? Cristiana.
Yeah. I don't have anything in specific right now, but I'm sure I'll think of plenty to say in the future.
Good. Tracy, Cisco?
Um, I'd just like to bring to everybody's attention that the Democratic Caucus will be March fourth, Friday. We are tentatively scheduling it at the high school, but we may go virtual and we'll make that decision in the next couple of weeks. And then the county assembly will be March tenth, again, tentatively at the CMC, or we may go virtual. Those are the dates.
Thank you, Tracy. Cisco, anything?
No, nothing to report this week.
Okay. Anybody else before we hit the easy button? Yeah?
That was easy.
Okay. At eight thirty-two, the city council's.
Nice. Yeah, Tim Hill, you're putting this ski back in the ski shop.